Okay, I'd like to call to order tonight's meeting of the Gardner zoning board of appeals. Today is November fifteenth. And before we begin, I'll go over several of the ground rules by which this board operates under. In Gardner, three members of the zoning board of appeals must be present to conduct a legal hearing. Applications will normally be heard in a sequence in which they appeared in a public notice. The board is under no obligations to adhere to that sequence. All hearings shall be open to the public and no person shall be excluded unless he or she is considered to be a hindrance to the workings of the board. An applicant may appear in his or her own behalf or be represented by attorney or agent. The applicant or his or her representative shall present the case to the board. Representatives of the city shall be heard. Abutists to the property present at the hearing shall be heard. Any other interested parties present at the hearing shall be heard. Those in opposition to the application will be heard. The board must render its decision regarding variance request within one hundred days after the application was duly filed in the office of the city clerk. Regarding special permits, the board must conduct a public hearing within sixty-five days after the -- excuse me, after the application was filed in the office of the city clerk. The board must render its decision within ninety days after the closing of the public hearing for the special permit. All three members of the board must vote in favor for the variance or special permit for it be granted and approved. The right to appeal the decision of this board is provided for in the zoning act. The information is available in the office of city clerk. No variance or special permit or any extension, modification, or renewal thereof shall take effect until notification from the city clerk that twenty days have elapsed after the decision has been filed in that office and no appeals have been filed and is recorded in the registry of deeds for the county or district. The burden for supporting the need for the variance or special permit rests with the applicant or representative of the applicant. The board requests that each person identify himself or herself as to name an address before addressing the board. Sitting on tonight's hearing, to my left, Mr. Mel Cornet; to my right, Mr. Randy Haglund; and myself, Ray LaFonda's chair. The meeting will be taped. Does anyone object to the taping of this meeting? May it noted, there's no objections. Okay, and one thing I will ask. If all of you will please silence your cellphones so they don't go off in the middle of a hearing, and otherwise we'll just stop the meeting and wait for that business to be taken care of. So silence is golden.
And attendance sheet.
Everybody has signed in the attendance sheet?
I did. I saw you. I wanted to do that.
Okay, then I will read the agenda for tonight's hearing. The cases, case nine, nine oh one, two oh two two is a variance for sixty Yale Street. It's a continuance from last month. Case zero nine zero three, two oh two two, special permit, two oh five, two thirteen School Street, that's a continuance from last month. Case one one, zero one, two oh two two, special permit, sixty-three Walnut Street. Convert an office building to seven residential units. Case one one, zero two, two oh two two, special permit, four forty West Broadway. Construct operation of a wireless communication facility, excuse me, a one-hundred-and-fifty-foot-tall monopole-style tower, one-hundred-and-fifty-six feet to the top of the lightning rod inside a fifty-fifty fenced-in compound. Then under new business, we have announcements and correspondence will be taken up at the end. Okay, so the first case that I would like to call is, oh yeah, sixty Yale Street case, oh nine, oh one, two oh two two, it's a continuance. I'm gonna just start with the zoning board on ten twenty-nine, visited that site and looked at the property. The variance issue is because needs thirty-foot frontage, has fifty, approximately plus or minus fifteen feet where it is. And looking at the structure, you have Yale Street, which goes up, doesn't go up straight, it sort of turns like this, and that's what causes that location to be substandard on the frontage setback. So I'm gonna first open it up to my board members. And generally, in a continuance, we will ask if there's any quick updates from the last meeting, because we will not go through the whole meeting, which has already been recorded, so any new information will entertain. So first, I'll ask my board members if they have any questions.
Not at this point.
No.
Okay. Who's representing Yale Street tonight?
Right here, Mr. Chair.
Okay, do you have any new additional information you want to provide the board?
Yes, sir, nothing last meeting or what was at the sidewalk.
Okay.
Twenty-ninth.
So I think a comment that I do want to make on Yale Street, a couple of questions. Is parking going to remain exactly as it is today?
Yes, sir, they intend to use the existing driveway.
Okay. This is common, front setbacks deficient, however, area is all wooded and at a minimum of three hundred feet from the abutter. Mr. Boris, who's up on Yale Street, and he has stated that unequivocally, he's not gonna allow any construction on that property other than his house that he has currently existing. The house is also currently non-conforming because it doesn't meet the thirty-foot setback on any of the spots, just because of the curvature of the road. And a new structure, and in the board's opinion, we have to determine is not gonna be more detrimental to the neighborhood. So with those comments, do you have any questions or comments, Mel?
Just one point of clarification, was that stone wall that we saw up there, was that actually the property line?
Haven't confirmed that, but given the shape of the lot, and we did see what I believe to be that corner in that iron pipe there, I feel reasonably confident that that was the remnants of the old lot.
Yeah, that was the only point I wasn't sure of when we were there.
Okay. Randy?
No.
Okay. All right, any, do you want to move for the decision on this? Or your motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, any further discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all as opposed? Variance granted with no conditions, as long as you build it where it's staked out.
Absolutely. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, the next case, zero nine zero three, two oh two two, it's a continuance, we visited that also on the twenty-ninth of October. It's two oh five, two thirteen School Street, and it's to operate in inpatient care. So I'll ask my board members if they have any questions or comments.
Well, when we took a look at it, it was, it seems to be consistent with the neighborhood. I mean, they already have a partial operation up there, even though it was not an embed-type operation. The layout seemed to be appropriate, they had more than adequate parking spaces, and from whatever, what I could see, they pretty well met all of its lines.
Okay. Any questions or comments, Randy?
Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend the site visit. But as I was reflecting upon last public hearing and reviewing the minutes that were prepared by the clerk, I think clerk and I both agreed it was probably a very confusing presentation. And hopefully, unfortunately, I didn't, I didn't view, and I, you know, there was a lot of, I don't know, it was, to me, it was, it was very confusing, not well-done presentation.
Okay. So what I'm gonna ask to try to give some clarification here.
Yep.
Is a representative from two oh five, two thirteen, who would like to speak? And what I'm gonna ask is, let's try to clear up the confusion on the presentation. I think you're gonna address the number of beds, what's security, the type of patient or client that you're gonna have. I think you cleared up a lot of that, excuse it, excuse me, when Mel and I visited.
Yes, I did.
On that Saturday, because we were there, we could ask the questions, we actually saw the facility. So I guess I'd like to try to keep it in that context, and I think security probably is a good one, because we asked that question and you answered it very clearly, so I'd like to get that answered. And length of stay and that type, and I'm just thinking, services, type of services provided to the type of client that you have.
I think that's important, because from my perspective, I was very unclear what type of client would be.
Going there.
Going there. You know, at one point, there was a discussion of, you know, have involvement with police.
Yep, and then she'll address that.
And then there is a discussion, well, everybody can leave voluntarily, kind of thing, there's no door, locked doors, and I, it just, it was very, very confusing to me.
So I think that's where you're gonna identify the type of client you have. And so you're sort of gonna make another presentation that you made last month?
Okay.
And so who will be your spokesperson?
I believe Jen LaRoche is gonna be our, she would best be able to answer those questions.
What's her name?
It's Jennifer LaRoche, two oh five School Street. So I'll.
Why don't we, can you stand over here, just so that the gentleman can see you on the camera, and YouTube world can also see you.
Is that okay where she's located?
Okay.
Great.
So it's an eight-bed community crisis stabilization unit, and it's.
Okay, you say stabilization.
Mm-hmm.
To me, stabilization means very short-term.
That's correct.
Okay.
The average, like, stays is three to five days.
Okay.
And it's primarily mental health, although people can have substance use issues, it's what we call dual diagnosis, but it's primarily a mental health setting. In Gardner, we, in this area, we have a very serious issue with lack of services for people who may not need to go inpatient, can't quite go home, but need, need further support. It is voluntary, so people can't be committed there. People, you mentioned the police, the police could drop off someone who might be depressed, need an evaluation, perhaps they could be admitted to that unit. Again, short-term, if they don't wanna be there, they can leave.
Evaluation's done twenty-four hours a day?
Correct.
Okay.
However, admissions to that program would be very minimal on the overnight. We, as I mentioned last time, we have two other programs, we very rarely have overnight admissions, but we do have, again, this is where it gets confusing, because we also have a crisis team that operates twenty-four hours a day and could evaluate somebody. But again, the admissions generally happen from eight AM until eleven PM.
When you say admissions, is that just the completion of the paperwork and so that you can get paid? So it, basically, it's an office person, not necessarily a clinician that.
No, it's a clinician. When, so when somebody is admitted to the program, there's a clinical assessment that's done, paperwork that's completed, and then person brought to their room, that's, that's when we, when I say admission, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay.
I'll just ask a question, and because we mentioned police, have you had any instances where you have had to call for security backup?
Only if somebody is unable to maintain their safety in the program, they're reporting that they're suicidal and can't remain safe even in that setting. So we have to, sometimes we have to call the police to assist, but mostly, it's calling an ambulance to bring them to the hospital. So sometimes the police come with an ambulance, not because we've called the police, because someone's out of control or anything like that.
At your other facilities, how big were they, can you remind me?
Sure. We have, in Greenfield, we have a fourteen, we just increased the capacity, that's why. I'm sorry, this is Joanne Bird, also with CSO, two oh five School Street, I know you like to identify who I'm talking to. We have fourteen beds in Greenfield.
Was it prior, because you said it just increased?
Twelve.
It was twelve, okay.
I don't wanna get into the weeds, but that program is a eight-bed community crisis stabilization program, like we're trying to do here, and then they have additional beds for DMH clients called respite, and that's a longer-term program, so that fourteen-bed is, is larger because we have.
DMH being.
Department of Mental Health.
Thank you.
And then in Northampton and Florence, we have a twelve-bed program.
Okay, to Chairman LaFonda's question, in your, well, you said the other one had a eight-bed facility similar to what you're proposing here. How often in those instances in the last year, or have you had to seek transfer by ambulance and police show up? How many, how many times has that occurred?
Ambulance or police are there quite often, because we have a relationship with them where if someone in the community is.
Not, yeah, and maybe, how can I say this, a response by police because of an incident or something going on versus, you know, them dropping off a patient or a client?
We've had, so an ambulance there, we've probably had seven or eight times to transport to the emergency room because someone needs a higher level of care, and police respond with them, that's how they do it in Greenfield.
That's the question I was asking, okay.
Not over approximately a year?
Mm-hmm, that's over a year.
You're open three sixty-five?
Yep.
Okay, twenty-four-seven?
Mm-hmm.
And anything else, Randy?
Not right now.
Okay. All right, do, I'll ask the representative, representatives, if you have any new information or info, data you would like to submit versus what she just presented? Nope.
Okay.
I think they, when we visited, they were very clear on, I'll call it the security coverage in terms of the police just generally accompany in the ambulance, and then, once the person's in, they leave. So crisis intervention from the police is almost minimal or nonexistent, okay? And the way it's laid out in their, the beds are on one side, and your evaluation offices, et cetera, are on, we'll say, on the right-hand side, and the beds are on the left-hand side, if that's how I remember it.
Yes.
Okay. Other issues, Randy, that we looked at was, it's on the third floor, so how do you get handicapped people up there? Could you go over that? Because I don't wanna put things in the wrong spot.
Sure. Sure. Joanne Bird, three, two oh five School Street. We have currently the plans being worked on for installing an elevator that will facilitate direct access from the main entrance of the building through the building twenty-two up to the third floor. That is being worked on and will be done as soon as we can conceivably do that. Additionally, we are drawing up plans, engineer drawings, architectural ramp drawings, for a ADA compliant ramp that would bridge the gap between, if you recall the site visit, there's a span between one building and the next to get from where there is elevator access to that third floor, so we're putting in a ramp, or applying to put in a ramp to accommodate that.
Now, what happens, excuse me, but what happens if you don't get the elevator?
Don't know the answer to that question. I, we would assumably figure something out. There is the option of doing a lift of some sort in addition to a ramp. I don't really answer to that.
Plans are in effect, are they being drawn at this time for an elevator?
We are working with engineers with the landlord.
Okay. And there is an elevator in another portion of the building?
Correct.
That will allow access up, and then you can transport the client across a ramp or something into your facility at this point?
That is correct.
Okay. The board could put a condition on this, that an elevator be constructed in your location that are not relying on the ancillary elevation. I mean, there's a stopgap measure, that's great, but not as a permanent solution.
Our goal would be that it would not be the permanent solution, the permanent solution would be an elevator.
Okay, so the board could put that on there, and once the plans are drawn, they would be definitely submitted to the building commissioner for review, et cetera.
I felt, I feel that they'd have to put one in.
Yep. Anything else, Randy?
No, no, I don't think so. I mean, I had, I saw the parking generation that was sent out, parking requirements that were sent out in October. Is, maybe you saw from use within the building, is there other parking-intensive properties or businesses or tenants of those buildings?
Okay.
And how does, and how does this fifty-five fit with all these other small?
Well, let's, if you saw, I don't know, it was a hundred and something, two hundred spaces.
Yeah.
I do not know, and I'm, I'm not gonna answer the question, I'm gonna ask you, or I can actually defer to Mr. Urquhart to answer. With their fifty-nine spaces, how does that impact the total number of spaces? Is there more than adequate space there in parking?
It's our understanding right now that we have adequate spacing, but we have some, we have tentative plans for augmenting the existing parking, should it be necessary to provide more spaces. We don't, we don't think that parking should be the sort of issue that might prevent this CSO project from coming to fruition.
Okay, let me rephrase my question.
There's one point of clarification, when we were there, you showed this one entire section that would be laid out exclusively, exclusively for you, and it was isolated from everyone else, and it was supposedly markings that were gonna go, and I think there was an overflow plan somewhere also.
Where we were standing.
Has that changed, or can you explain it so that, Randy, because Randy wasn't there?
Yes, so the lower lot, which is exclusively CSO parking currently, in addition to that, there's the overflow lot, which is where we were standing on the upper side, which I think eighteen of those would be in addition to the existing lower, to equal up to the fifty-nine or the requirement that was requested.
Okay, Mr. Urquhart, this is my question. If these people get their special permit to move in and they need those fifty-plus spaces, does that put a strain on the parking for the tenants that you have in your facility there?
I think not.
Can we get away from, I think not, it does or it doesn't?
Well.
I'm not talking about something future coming, I'm talking about exists today.
I guess I can't answer that question, I'm just.
I can answer that question.
Go ahead.
Please state your name.
My name is Doug Smith, and I work for the Urquhart family, and we, we supervise our movements. We have adequate parking with the two hundred spaces we have for what we, what we're planning for their unit. The lower level, as you look in the map, is completely for those, that, that one unit. We're gonna have the overflow on the parking lot above that, on the top of the hill. We have more than enough parking right now available to cover what we have in the building for tenants, plus what they're going to do with the two hundred spaces that we have.
What, what's your, your current occupancy of the building, percentage-wise, versus occupied versus available?
I think the square footage is, sixty-three percent of that building is occupied.
Okay.
At the moment.
Okay.
That does not include the plans that CSO has.
And that would cover, add how much of a percentage?
We'd have to get some, do some math, but it's an additional thirteen thousand square feet, so.
And how large is?
Three oh five is the building, sixty-three percent of that is whatever it is, and we can break it.
And plus your, how many employees do you have?
For this program coming on board?
Additional staff with this?
And I threw this, this is how we told them. At maps.
Mm-hmm.
And that's on shift at any given point in time, or is that total?
No, that's total, eighteen.
So eighteen spread across.
Three shifts.
Three shifts, seven days a week.
Okay, so each shift is approximately thirty, twenty-five people?
No, no, no.
Eighteen total.
Eighteen total.
On a shift?
Correct.
Yep, and you're getting fifty-four spaces. Yep, so have you been down there at all? I've just been looking at the.
I, no, I get down there and I get confused, so I, I, unfortunately, I didn't.
I'm gonna try.
I didn't open an email until after.
Do you know where the entrance to Henry Sands' office?
Yes.
Okay, right across the street, there's a, how many parking spaces right across the street there?
They'll tell you on the map up there. If my may, I can come up and show you.
Forty, it looks like forty-four. This front lot, did you refer to his front lot? I guess this, one lot is forty-four spaces. A number of them in the front row are already dedicated for different tenants.
Yes, and then it's open parking across the back. We have seventy-two spaces here that Hayward is using, but they're only using probably fifty cars out of that.
When you say Hayward, that's the medical office?
That's also, they have the medical office, and they have the executive office on the fourth floor, which is accounting and HR right now. They just moved in up there. So their total is less than what we have here. The lower level is where we're putting the main part of what they're doing for the CSO program. The upper lot here, which is coming down School Street up to Chestnut, this lot sits between this lot, this is up above, this is lower.
Look over the fence.
Yeah, I remember that, yeah.
So, and then we have this parking lot here with additional spaces.
Okay.
This is where Cube Smart is.
Over here.
Yes, Cube Smart is here.
Yeah.
Sam Warren.
Their fenced-in.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much for clearing that up. So I think, just in summary, looking at that, based on current situation, there is more than adequate parking there. And if you get new tenants, you know, and if it's not an approved use, they'll be back here, then we would look at parking again.
We're sitting on approximately seven acres there. We have the whole front of the building and the side facing the church that's on Chestnut Street, that we can, eventually, additional parking could be made.
Okay, there's adequate space.
With the growth of the building. Right now, it's not needed.
Thank you very much. Okay, anything else?
No.
No?
No, I'm good.
Okay, my notes here, the elevator we talked about, and the parking space is fifty-nine, and you've met that, so those were my only two comments on there.
Yep.
So do we want to move for a motion on this one, for approval?
Okay.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? None? All in favor of granting the special permit?
What's the condition?
Discussing, conditions?
Oh, the condition is the elevator, a separate elevator will need to be conducted, constructed for your facility right there, and plans will be submitted for approval to the building commissioner, which is standard anyway. Anything else on the condition? You, Mel?
Well, you had mentioned earlier, it's a stopgap measure they could use, I mean, is, do you, are you giving them a period of time to do this, or before they open, or what do you?
I, I find it maybe kinda hard to give them a period of time, because the way construction's going today, materials, you get automatic delays and.
Welcome to my world, yeah.
Yeah, so you, let me ask this, do you think it would be done within twelve months?
The elevator, or the construction of our, this place?
The elevator.
Our hope would be to be.
And it will be accessible by clients coming in?
Our goal is six months, barring any major delays, but that's, again.
Yep, well, I think, I would like to suggest give them twelve months, just so, because they do have an elevator and a walkway that they can get there, so the construction of their elevator within twelve months. If for some reason that gets delayed, then you'll have to petition this board to come in and ask for an extension, you'll win that, okay? Anything else?
No.
No.
Randy?
No.
Okay, so we've got a motion on the floor, there was no further discussion other than the two conditions. Okay, so we've got a motion on the floor, there was no further discussion, other than the two conditions, construct it, and you have twelve months to get it done. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No opposition? Special permit approved.
Thank you.
Now, if you remember, I talked about the timeline.
Yes.
Okay, so you've got almost a month now before, but you can keep going on your elevator.
Fully noted, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, now we're going to get the case one-one-zero-one-two-oh-two-two, a special permit for sixty-four Walnut Street, convert an office building into seven residential units.
Good evening, I believe it's sixty-three, not sixty-four.
Just.
It was sixty-three.
Oh, did I say sixty-four?
You said sixty-four.
I stand corrected, it's sixty-three.
Not close enough.
Yeah.
It's across the street, by the.
He just moved. Okay, this is out, this is out, and this is yours.
Yeah, one second, I need to pull this together.
Is that?
Not yet, no.
Okay. Just letting him get his things in order. Have you heard from Dave?
No.
I wonder if they're getting hammered with the storm.
I know.
Okay, yeah, you can go ahead.
Okay. Please state your name, address to the record, and you're going to be the representative who's going to present this case?
Yes.
Okay.
My name is Daniel Stroh, I'm here with Mr. Jan Kulesko and Mr. Shuina, we're all.
And your address?
Seven Candlewood Place in Worcester.
Okay.
So first of all, I know you have all the plans and the application, but I apologize for the public, because we had a nice board with a big print that everybody could see, but it didn't make it to the business, to the meeting tonight, so I apologize for that.
Okay, so then the burden's on you to explain it more, so the interested parties can understand.
Perfect. So right now, we have a, um, single-story building that is abandoned, has been vacant for ten-plus years. The current, the last use of it was commercial offices and some industrial, some storage. It's in a residential neighborhood. We plan to convert that into apartments, rental apartments. Uh, what we typically do is high-end, so market rate, nothing subsidized. The, um, um, we, we propose, um, building seven units. They're relatively small units, studios and one-bedrooms. We do have currently eleven parking spots that we plan to use, so we, we only need one per bedroom, but in this case, we have a few more. We don't propose any changes to the parking lot or to the exterior of the building, it's just conversion of the, of the space into.
Hey, if I can interrupt you.
Yes.
The plans that I have here show seven parking spaces, or you have seven required.
Yes.
Because you have two two-bedroom and five one-bedroom, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
More than that.
We have eleven.
Got ten. And eleven with the handicap.
With the handicap, yeah.
That is actually, um, we don't need that handicap space, but it was there already, so we just present the, the way it is now, right now, but technically, we don't need the handicap.
Okay. Oh, you may continue, thank you.
Okay, um, so, again, um, we believe that this is beneficial to the city, because it's in a residential neighborhood. The last use was, as I said, commercial, uh, there has been, um, a proposal years ago to convert in, convert this into a, a, a home, you know, of some sort, that I understand didn't happen. We believe it's in the interest of the city to get this developed, um, the, uh, community development plan has one of the initiatives is the development of vacant properties in the downtown area, which fits very well with that. I did present, um, a map of the area where it shows that there are a lot of commercial and multi-units in that area, so it'd be, be fitting well within the neighborhood.
How, what is the size of the, the land itself, the property?
I need help on that thing.
Yeah, because this plan shows no dimensions.
Mm-hmm.
It's an older plan that we, we used, showing the existing, and because we're not changing it, we didn't, um, uh, we didn't, uh.
So would Walnut Street be here?
Yes.
Okay.
What I'm talking is.
Survey in your package there?
This is all I have.
It is, I do have a, an older plan that shows.
Yeah, that's one of them.
Yeah, that was not in the package.
What I'm really asking is what percentage of open space do you have on this property, because it is a fairly small property.
Yes.
I would guess around twenty-five percent.
Don't need to guess, I'd like to know what it is.
We don't have that calculation.
Okay.
Again, we are not, we don't, uh, plan to add any, um, extend the parking or change the exterior of the building in any way.
Well, the requirements for that area is eighty-five percent coverage, and you gotta have fifteen percent free, and that's, I know how small the thing is, I'm just trying to understand what it is, what you're actually using.
We can present that, but I don't have that exact number.
Okay. What, well, I can, I'll just, I'm going to jump way ahead right now.
Yeah.
We will view this property.
Okay.
So for the open questions, you can have that ready when we get there.
Perfect.
If we can get lot size, coverage, no facility. The thing is, this building, I know the Sabah building, it's existed there for twenty years plus, anyway. You know, so it's there, and you can't change the coverage, you're not changing the footprint.
No.
Of the building. I'm going to ask, what is this right here?
That's the, um, the building next door, it used to be.
That is part of the same building, but it's not going to be used for this development, it's going to end up being storage.
Okay, so that's part of the building?
Yes.
It is part of the building.
Let's, I guess, be this.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Right there.
Yep. And you've marked your dumpster.
No, it's no storage.
The dumpster is there too.
Okay, alright.
And that's just no storage?
Yes.
You say that entire section's going to be for storage? This bump out here?
Yes, it's not developed.
Yes, your ladies can leave.
It's nothing personal, is it?
I must be very boring.
It's a two-story building, and, Daniel, do you have some pictures?
I don't have a picture, well, I have a pic, I have some pictures of them, but not, not of that.
You could probably see the building.
It's a two-story, again, used, it was used for storage, um, it's not part of the development, we, it will be sprinkled and be safe, but.
So the other part that's two-story is the, the end part, the rest of it's all single-story.
Yes, so I do have.
Oh, yeah.
I have some pictures here.
Yeah.
This is the back of the property, and this is the two-story structure, it's very narrow and, um,
Got it.
Quite frankly, not clear what we would use for that would be.
Okay.
I have more pictures here, if you'd like to take a look.
Thank you.
So this is from the rear of the property?
Yes, this one here is.
This is the rear. That's the front.
That's the front, this is the.
That's the assessor's, the assessor's car.
Which is the rear?
This is the parking lot, right here.
Right here? This is storage is on the left.
This is, goes like this. This is the front.
The two-story part is closest to Chestnut Street, um, it's, it's almost zero lot line, it looks like at some point in time, there was a loading dock, it shares an easement with the other property, and they probably use storage up there. Below storage, the second story, the basement, as it would be, it's only about six feet in height, it's really not even a story. It's kind of a partial two-story building.
For access and egress?
Yes.
You need two spaces, are these going to be considered the two?
Correct. It's actually, um, three, um, as, as you look there on the, on the actual plan. Again, this, we are using a, um, a plan that was already, um, done, but that's, uh, if you look at the floor.
Shows three.
Yes, there are three.
Well, yep, okay. Exit, exit, so you have four.
Four of them, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Lighting. Are you planning any exterior lighting on the building for your tenants to come in in the evening?
We do, do you need a, um, a lighting plan? Okay, we will present that as well.
Okay. Now.
On those two end apartments you have next to the storage?
Yes.
I see the exits are, entrances too, where's the second? Of those apartments? You have the storage facility over here. Apartments on the.
I think the.
So the two units closest to the storage area have their own exits out of their apartments, whereas the others?
In a hallway.
Share.
Correct.
A hallway common. Okay.
You're right, I, I'm not, um, I'm not sure why there is no second lane of egress, um, could be because it's, building is sprinkled, or it was, could be a mistake, but obviously, it will be up to code when we.
Okay, I think, we're going to view this property.
Yeah.
But I think you've got some issues in terms of the dimensions of the property, where your lighting is going to be, I mean, you don't, right now, have to submit your lighting plan, but we'd like to know what type of lighting?
Yes.
Where it's going to be located, and also, if you're planning any lighting, you know, in the parking area back here.
Yes.
Because, uh, it can get pretty dark back there.
We will submit that.
And I'm going to ask the board, yeah, I'm going to have you with more questions, but to consider continuing this case next month, to let them update their plans, get them how they should be, and then we can set a time to go out and visit it, and get an idea.
Perfect.
And I would prefer not to go visit till we see your plans, that shows us where you're going to put your lighting, so we can see it when we view the building.
Okay.
And, I mean, you can use a can of spray paint, this is where they're going to be, and what type in downward lighting, you know, so not to impact your butters.
And I think to member Cornet's, um, concern either, too, about landscaping and, and green space and stuff, I mean, the, you know, there's obviously some buffer area on the rear of the property by these parking areas, and I mean, the back of the building is in pretty tough shape, so I think we'd be looking at what exterior of the building, what your, what your plans are for the.
See, there is a, a, a picture here showing the back, so there is a buffer there, and.
Yeah, I understand, but what do you, what do you intend on doing with that, is, I guess, the question?
What are you going to put in there, what kind of plants, what kind of shrubbery or whatever? Also, your plan does not show a driveway, or any access onto Walnut Street?
Uh, it is there, but again, it doesn't, for some reason, it was cut on the lower part, but if you look at, uh, uh, if you look at the other plan, it does have a driveway, it's more than twenty-four foot wide, so, about twenty-four feet wide, a bit more.
Okay. So I think, when you submit your new plans, you're going to have your driveway laid out, where it's going to exit, the width of the driveway. Are these all nine-by-eighteen spaces?
Correct.
Okay. So that's an addition, and if you're going to put shrubbery in, you know, you're using a computer program, so it's very easy to draw your shrubbery in.
Sure.
And tell them what kind of shrubbery it's going to be, and to, one thing, I'm sure you want to beautify this property, because it's not beautiful now.
It isn't, isn't it?
It's in disrepair.
Yes.
So I'm sure, to protect your investment, uh, you plan to upgrade that. So we'd like to see on your plans those upgrades, so we can envision what this is going to look like. And if things are lacking, then we can, as we, I did with the others, I can put, we can put conditions on.
Sure.
That will require that that happen.
Yes, there is a loading dock there, if you're looking at that, that's.
Yep, is that, that'll be gone, so this could potentially be additional green space or something, because your driveway is here.
That's actually driveway.
Your driveway is here, right?
Uh, that's actually right in the driveway, so if you want the twenty-four foot, that's part of the driveway.
So what is this little, this concrete wall then?
But that's part of the loading dock. I don't know exactly how it was constructed and why, but that's, that's.
Yeah, okay.
So are you keeping it, or you?
No.
Okay.
You see that?
Sure.
Please.
So this is the, the loading dock that shows on the plan.
Mm-hmm.
But, um, it doesn't show on, on our profile.
Yeah, it shows that concrete wall, now, question, um, there's a right-of-way on, on this plan that you provided, there's a right-of-way. What is that right-of-way for, do you know?
Uh, there is, um, a lot in the back here, it's not used, but, um, uh, that's the right-of-way.
Access to that back lot?
Yes.
Okay.
Who owns that back lot?
I'm sorry?
Who owns it?
The neighbor on this side owns that as well. It's, it's not us.
Okay. Yeah, you had some notes and stuff on the back, did you want to leave this with us, or did you?
No, that's, um, I apologize, let me give you this, I'll take that one.
That's cleaner, yep, that's good.
Okay, so now, if, since this is a special permit, you have nine items to address.
Yes.
And I'll give you an opportunity, if you, if you want to address them tonight, that's fine, but we're going to continue this case the next month. And if you prefer to do it at the next meeting, that's okay also, so I'll let you make that decision.
Um, it's up to you, if, I would be very comfortable talking about them tonight, if there is any issues, we can address them next week, next month.
Well, I guess, I'm going to ask you, just look at my nine questions, or my nine items. Some of them relate to what we've said we need, where the driveway is going to be, this and that, and I'm just looking at one. Proposal to provide adequate off-street parking, loading, unloading goods, products, and next, the normal operation? I don't see driveways here, exiting, so I think your new plans, you would be better prepared to answer that after you've updated these plans.
That's a two-way driveway, so, uh, but, yes, I understand.
So, I mean, I'll, if you want to go ahead with it, that's fine, but I think you would be better prepared next month.
Okay.
To answer those questions, because then you can refer to the plans or documents that you gave us, or you will give us. And then we can see actually what you're going to do, you know, and we're talking about lighting, we don't know where the lighting is going at this point in time, you can tell us, but.
Correct.
I need a plan that's going to show this, because I can't hold you accountable for this plan, because it's not there. So if we're going to hold you accountable to develop the property, as you say you're going to do, and we'd like to see at least visually what it's going to look like. And, yeah, you're going to make some minor changes, and that's okay, but it gives us a conceptual, where the exits are, you know, the urgency, et cetera. So that's just my suggestion, I'm going to let you make the call.
Okay, I'll follow your suggestion.
So you will.
Will, will, will.
So I can move for a continuance to your case for next month?
Okay.
Okay?
Is there a, anything else that you think would be, need to be addressed for next month?
Well, let's see if we can recap what we need. We need a plan that's going to show dimensions.
Mm-hmm.
Your exits onto Walnut Street, lays out your driveway, your shrubbery, your, your landscaping, where it is, what it's going to consist of. If you can't put your lighting in, your new exits, where they're going to be. If you're removing that, uh, loading dock, plan should show that loading dock is not there.
Yes.
Anything else that we might have mentioned?
Do you actually have a lot layout, a plot plan for the lot? Do you actually have a lot layout, a plot plan for the lot? That you can place the building on, so we can see dimensions, we haven't seen it, so...
That's it?
That's it?
Yeah, there's, they're not changing this at all?
Well, then, well, as long as you include that in the next package.
Yeah.
We'll do, we'll, we'll have a, um, updated, um, plan with the dimensions.
And it's a little more detailed, perfect.
A little bit more details, yes.
One thing we always look at, and we're sensitive to, um, you know, surface water drainage, you know, where does, it's got a flat roof, where does that drain currently? Um, where is it, and I, you know, I assume you're gonna be making no changes to that, but
Yes.
We, we always ask, where does that end up, where does it go?
We don't want it flowing on your butters' property. You know, so how are you gonna contain the water off the roof? You know, so what, what's your plan to contain it on your property?
We are going to, um, address what's currently happening, but the building has been there for fifty years and, um, you know, we hadn't, we haven't had, you know, flooding issue.
It looks like you're...
Do our best to make sure it doesn't.
Sure.
You know, 'cause now you're at, I don't wanna use the word mercy, but you're before this board, because what you wanna do violates the zoning ordinance. So we wanna make sure what comes out is a good product for you, tenants, and the butters, and the city. So that everybody wins, and we don't create any problems.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question?
Who said that, you? Your address and name.
Uh, Glenn Chenard, um...
You may come up here. As I said, we wanna give you U2 coverage.
Yeah, there I am. Um, I just wanted to add to that, so currently, the runoff off the roof is coming into the drive, and it looks like they have put in some type of crush-and-run along the left side of the, um, drive that's existing, and that crush-and-run brings it to a storm drain down on the road. So it looks like it's been there for a while, but I went there earlier, and it was draining, um, functioning. So that's currently what's been there and is there, and
So if we're on a site visit, you can show that to us.
And that's kinda what you're looking for, right?
When we visit, yes, 'cause we don't want a flat roof that has no east troughs or downspouts, and it just runs off, or the downspout comes and is pointed to your butter right there.
Or connected to the sanitary sewer, it's...
Or connected to the sanitary sewer.
Hmm, yeah.
Correct, good point.
Sewer drains.
So if it runs off into the city drain, fine, but just, you know, you can show it to us when we get there.
Okay.
And then, of course, you'll be responsible for keeping part of that clean, so it doesn't back up, you know, into the drain. But we, we can take care of that later.
Okay.
So I think you understand what we're looking for now.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah. Okay, and I think we've got...
You know, be, be sensitive to item number five too, the visually offensive structures or site features, I mean, obviously, the building in its current condition is, 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 is in kinda rough shape, so what, what are your plans for the exterior of the building? Looks like there was some kind of siding on the back that probably was taken off or something.
It'd be useful if we, uh, give you, um, uh, some photographs or websites of our previous projects, so you can see...
I mean, that's, that's always helpful.
Yeah.
That's always helpful, yep. We've, uh, we've entertained those in the past, and it's helpful, um... Okay, you got a place for dumpster, stuff like that?
Right there in the corner here.
Mm-hmm. I'm assuming the rubbish truck can get in and out.
Yeah, well, once we find out what the dimensions are here, we'll know if the truck can get out, it'll have to back in to get there. Um, snow removal, I'll just address it, I know it's, and that's why if we can see where these driveways are, 'cause right now, as I look at this, and we've been known to get significant amounts of snow that pile up.
Yes.
So my first thing would be, how are you, when are you gonna take it out of here? What if there's a driveway, you have an easy access to the road to remove it? You know, once it becomes an unmanageable amount.
Yeah, I guess, according to your site plan for this other, it looks like pretty much the edge of the paved area
It is, uh...
Is the property line.
Correct.
Pretty close. So, um, you know, and that's the one question we always ask, is how do you handle snow? And just have a, have a plan ready and
Yep.
Prepared to answer that.
Okay, and board members have any other questions at this point?
No.
So?
No.
I guess, I'll just recap, we've told you what we wanna see. You're gonna address the nine points of a special permit, uh, at the next meeting, and then we can move forward, I think fairly quickly, but we will, we will wait to go into a site visit after the next meeting, 'cause we wanna see what you're presenting, what you're saying, where things will be located, and then we wanna look at the property.
So the, uh, the property visit is gonna be before or after the next meeting?
The inspection will be after the next meeting.
After, okay.
Okay. Provided we don't have a ton of snow.
Well, then you, then you can see, then you can see firsthand how we handle that.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna call for motion to, uh, continue this to the next one.
Still moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Now, if there are any interested parties in here to talk about this project, I'm not gonna take them from the floor tonight. I would rather them present their material, their new plans, and everybody can see what is gonna happen here, or proposed to happen. Then we can get some valid questions, et cetera. Versus a lot of it now would be conjecture on what it is, so I just wanna let everybody know, next meeting I'll take all the issues from the floor. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so all those in favor of continuing this case to our December meeting? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, unanimous, you're gonna continue it to December? And that will be, Marielle, you got a calendar there with the third Tuesday?
December the twentieth.
The twentieth? Okay with that?
I'm good.
Okay, December twentieth, six-thirty here.
Sounds good.
Do you think you have enough time to prepare for the twentieth? Do you have enough time?
Uh, I believe we do, but...
If you, if you think you don't, let us, you know, a couple weeks ahead of time if at all possible, 'cause then...
'Cause we have to publish this fourteen days before the meeting, so I don't wanna go into a publish mode, and then I gotta retract.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make sure.
And that'll save you money.
That's good.
Yeah, and I mean, if you're not sure, you say January, it'll be better?
Especially with the Thanksgiving holiday there to...
You can get hopping?
It's been waiting a long time, so, it's time to do something with that building, right?
Oh, we appreciate that.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll be ready for you, and hopefully you will be ready for us.
Please do.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you, good night.
Thank you, guys, like always, you do a good job. Thank you. Just bear with us for a minute, so I can get my papers back in order. All right. Next case before us is one-one-zero-two-two-oh-two-two, a special permit for four-forty West Broadway to construct, uh, construct operation of a wireless communication facility, a one-hundred-and-fifty-foot-tall monopole-style tower at a hundred-and-fifty-six feet to the top of the lightning rod inside a fifty-fifty fenced-in compound. So I'll state for the record, uh, the representative is, uh, preparing his visual presentation. Are you all set, sir?
I am, yes, sir.
Your name, address, and the floor is yours.
Uh, good evening, my name is Francis Parisi, Parisi Law Associates in Providence, Rhode Island, representing the applicant Vertex Towers of Sharon, Massachusetts. Uh, we are here tonight seeking a special permit to construct a wireless telecommunications facility, uh, which is what your bylaw calls it, but everyone else in the world calls it a cell tower, um, at, uh, four-forty West Broadway. It's basically behind the Salvatore, um, auto dealership, uh, that's a multi-lot parcel, um, a total of about ten acres, of which, um, there's a five-acre parcel toward the back that the facility will build. Uh, the, um, 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 the lot does not have frontage on Broadway or the side street, however, um, in a meeting with Roland several months ago, we determined that because all of the abutting lots do have frontage, and they're under common ownership, they're merged for zoning purposes, and therefore we have sufficient frontage. So we didn't need a, a variance from the lack of frontage requirement. So really, all we need tonight is a special permit. Uh, it's in a permitted zone, the, um, commercial zone, subject to the special permit. By way of introduction, Vertex Towers, we are not a telecommunications company, we are what we call a wireless infrastructure developer. We build cell towers and then lease space to the, uh, companies you've heard of, AT&amp;T and Verizon and T-Mobile. What's happened in the telecommunications world is that the telecommunications companies that you've heard of like Verizon have pretty much gotten out of the real estate business, and have partnered up with folks like Verizon, for Vertex, to, uh, help them, uh, deploy wireless infrastructure in, in, uh, much more needed places. Um, we were just recently approved in Hubbardston, uh, we are under, we built a tower in Chutesbury. We do a lot of work in, um, even more rural areas than, uh, um, Gardner. It's, it's just, uh, um, it allows us to go to places that are underserved, and we build facilities that are, are tall enough and with the structural integrity to accommodate multiple telecommunications companies. So we can be very thoughtful, we can look at your zoning bylaw, we can look at the existing infrastructure, we can look at land use, and develop facilities that comply with your zoning bylaw, and also satisfy the needs of multiple telecommunications companies. Uh, I submitted a very extensive application package, I got lots more if you wanna read it. Uh, we do an extensive amount of due diligence to make sure that it, uh, it satisfies the zoning bylaw, it satisfies the technical requirements of multiple telecommunications companies. Uh, it's all fully compliant with, uh, uh, all the federal regulations that go along with cell towers, and we believe that this is a, uh, you know, a very good application, we don't need any variances, we, uh, we found a lot that meets all the setback requirements, both of your zoning bylaw, and also your, um, uh, telecommunications bylaw. Uh, I don't know if I have to sell cell towers, uh, uh, we don't have a lot of people here. Uh, uh, what's happening in the world is that our cell phones are getting smarter, and the coverage that we used to enjoy even five and ten years ago is shrinking from the existing infrastructure. Uh, so, you know, there's a, there's existing infrastructure along the Route Two corridor, there's actually a smokestack not too far from here that, uh, has some antennas on it, but, uh, uh, you know, we, we're finding that there are gaps in coverage along even the Route Two corridor, and certainly on the south side of Gardner going towards Hubbardston. Uh, Hubbardston was like, there was nothing there.
I call it radio-free Hubbardston.
Exactly, and so, uh, uh, we were just, we were just approved in right downtown Hubbardston, pretty much, I don't know if you know Hubbardston, uh, right across the street from the town hall, right behind the, uh, post office there, uh, up on the hill, and then this will connect up with that to provide coverage, um, certainly like along the southern Gardner area where that new Walmart is, and that big, uh, uh, commercial plaza that's going in. Uh, um, and actually, you know, I, I guess I don't know if I need to sell this, a lot of times we're in more rural areas where we're coming in for the first time, Hubbardston, they had nothing in Hubbardston. Uh, you know, you know, just the, the need, the public safety benefit, we do a lot of work in New Hampshire and even more rural areas than Gardner or Hubbardston, and, uh, places where there's just nothing there, and, uh, but the, the, there are people there, there is a need, and what's happened in telecommunications, and truly what's, um, helped us is public safety is getting more and more involved, because they're more reliant on, on the commercial networks for their own backup, for their own public safety communications, and, you know, people are using nine-one-one, so over eighty percent of nine-one-one calls are made by mobile phones. If you don't have a signal, you can't make a nine-one-one call. Um, the other thing that's going on is, um, AT&amp;T is developing a, uh, a nationwide public safety network called FirstNet, and the evolution of it was, is that, uh, um, AT&amp;T is capacity constrained in places like Boston and New York, uh, and they need more bandwidth. And they went to the federal government, and they asked for bandwidth, and the federal government said, "We, we will give you more bandwidth, we'll sell it to you actually, uh, but we want you to develop a public safety network" that ninety-nine percent of the time when there's no public safety real need, you got, AT&amp;T can use it. But, um, at that one time when there's a, a natural disaster, or, you know, some big incident, um, uh, public safety can flick a switch and they get priority to this network. And so what that does is it, and AT&amp;T said, "That's great," but it requires AT&amp;T to go to places that they previously didn't have coverage, rural areas, uh, like I said, we're doing a lot of work in western Massachusetts, west of Route ninety-one, where there's just nothing. And, uh, but, you know, uh, so we've developed, uh, uh, we have two towers going up in Conway, one in Asheville, one in Buckland, one in Colrain, one in Row, places where they, you know, half the towns I've never even heard of before, and yet, you know, they just need better telecommunications. Uh, uh, and we did an extensive amount of, uh, due diligence, and we provided affidavits from various engineers. You know, that, that neighborhood of West Broadway, and it's really not just West Broadway, it's really the, the Route Two corridor. As you know, it's kinda, as you come through Route Two, right just south of downtown, uh, Gardner, you're kinda in a bowl there, and then it actually goes farther downhill as you go south into Gardner, where, you know, the Walmart is, and, uh, you know, there's just a lot of topography to show, but, uh, the coverage is really lacking, um...
How much coverage does a tower like that go, does it range out a mile, a mile, a half mile?
Um, it, 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 what we're trying to cover is this area in here. Um, so, uh, and we're proposing something that's a hundred-and-twenty feet tall. I think the existing tower is going towards the east side of, uh, Gardner, we're a hundred-and-fifty and a hundred-and-seventy, so we're filling in a smaller gap. It's really just designed to cover that stretch of Route Two in between, uh, like right south of downtown Gardner, going into Templeton and then going south. Uh, it's, it's, um, so it's really hard to say linearly, because things are topographical, and also, uh, you know, it, it's, it's not gonna project too far north into Gardner, because you're going uphill there. It's gonna project much farther south into Gardner and into Hubbardston, because you're going downhill.
And just go back one, so you go back to that one, um, you show an existing tower, basically, I think it's, it's supposed to be on that apartment building behind us, if you go back one, one, uh...
Okay.
Here it is, see the Baker Street, it's kinda like in the middle, right in the center, there's a, there's a...
Yeah, there's, there's antennas there, so we know where the existing infrastructure is.
I don't know if like ever been, it's been approved, but I don't know if it's ever been...
Um, we look at it as existing, part, part of the, the issue, COVID has slowed a lot of things down, and what's happened is, uh, um, getting folks like AT&amp;T, uh, to focus on Gardner as opposed to Boston or Dallas or Los Angeles or the thousands of miles in between, and then also multiple telecommunications companies, so we, and, and, um, uh, and it takes us years to develop this infrastructure, doing all the engineering, doing all the due diligence, we have federal due diligence that we have to do, so we're, we're anticipating that that's going to get fully, um, developed by multiple telecommunications companies, and we're not trying to compete with that, we're trying to supplement it on the south end of Gardner going into...
Now, it's, your 5G reduces the effective range of each tower.
That, that's another thing that's going on. Uh, um, uh, the, 3G was like the first digital technology, 4G is what we enjoy right now, which is the, uh, faster throughput speed through our telephones, and then 5G is even faster data speeds. As we develop 5G, they're discontinuing 3G networks, and that's what I kinda alluded to at the beginning. So places where you had 3G coverage, you know, you, you could probably make a pretty good phone call right now along the Two corridor, not perfectly, but, uh, um, but as they start shutting off the 3G networks from Templeton and from Westminster and stuff, that footprint starts to shrink. So what, what we're anticipating is that that gap is actually gonna get bigger over time. Uh, and that's why we're developing something a hundred-and-twenty feet, accommodating multiple telecommunications companies. Uh, uh, and then, and like I said, there's, you know, there's a substantial amount of development in the sub, the south end of Gardner, the new Walmart, the, it looks like, is there a movie theater going right next to the Walmart or something? Uh, uh, and, uh, that big commercial plaza, the Starbucks, and all that down there. Um...
You've said multiple times a hundred and twenty feet.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. It's a hundred and fifty. I, I, I misspoke. We have so many things going on. The lot itself is like, um, it's, um, it's a series of five lots owned by the same landowner. So it's a total of about ten acres that is comprised of the, um, the car dealership. We're in towards the back, respectful of the fact that it gets wet down towards the, the, the southern end of the, the lot. So we were very conscious about where to put it. Uh, the good part is, is that I, I can show you on an aerial photo. All this area in here is for, uh, heavily forested and we're not, we're going right up to the edge of the line. We're not taking out any trees. But, uh, uh, the area behind us and certainly for the, the neighborhoods to the west and south, uh, you know, will never get developed because this is all wet down in here. So it'll be, so there's a substantial vegetative buffer on three sides. And then the fourth side is the car dealership. Uh, so it's, it's pretty well shielded from, um, in all directions by, uh, just the, the, the nature of the use.
Is that the area that they were talking about putting in solar panels?
No, I don't think so, because I think, uh.
Remember with the solar panels, you had to go down Kinzer and then Turca.
Right, right.
So it's beyond.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, cause you'd be honest, this is all wet in here. So, and, and we're very conscious. There's multiple wetlands lines. I'm not involved in solar project, but I can tell they can't be going there. The, the facility itself is setback from all abutting property lines, um, well more than the height of the tower, which is what your zoning bylaw requires. The closest to abutting lot is actually a town owned lot that's unutilized right next to it. And where it's still tower height setback from there. And then, um, you know, hundreds of feet from the, uh, the back of the property, which is undevelopable wetlands. And then it's wet over here as well. So.
Now, these, these towers, you, you mentioned the AT&T public emergency, public sa- safety network, whatever it is. So you have, um, emergency generators on site or?
We are just the, uh, developer of the tower. Eventually we will lease space on to companies like AT&T and Verizon. And they may made hot, have generators. Some, AT&T always has a generator. T-Mobile never has a generator. Verizon sometimes has a generator, so it's hard to say.
So potentially if you have three or four different companies that you're, you're, you're leasing your tower to, you could have four, four generators out there?
Yeah, except for, um, the generator is a, the third form of power. These are hooked up to the regu- electrical service for their first form. Um, the, the equipment all has backup batteries that, um, maybe last twelve to twenty-four hours, depending on the cut, the carrier, um, for short-term power failures. And then they'd have either a permanent or bring on a temporary generator for long-term power failures. So, uh, it, uh, it's something.
I'm just thinking for that emergency network, it seems like that, that would be some kind of contingency plan.
Yeah.
That they would need. I mean.
Oh, absolutely. But, uh.
I mean, we had an ice storm here back in, what, two thousand and nine and we, you know, we had powers for weeks.
Right. And, and but, you know, like you said, uh, you know, that's the exception, not the rule. But, uh, yeah, there, there, AT&T will definitely have a generator on it. Other carriers may or may not, uh, depending on their, their needs and their priorities. But, uh, uh, you know, the, uh, you know, but like I said, they're the third form, form, they're not like permanently powered by generators. The generator might kick on once a week, just to cycle on, just to make sure it, it works properly. But, uh, and my suspicion is that if we had a long-term power failure, there's lots of generators going on, including other commercial areas in the town. The, uh, like I said, the towers, I don't think, not working. It's setback from all the abutting property lines more than the height of the tower, which is what your zoning bylaw requires. The, uh, the tower itself is what we call a monopole, very similar to the other tower in town. It's, the tower itself will be a hundred and fifty feet tall. On the top of it will be a small lightning rod, which, it's actually more pronounced on the picture than you'll ever see. It's about the same size on, in reality. It, it's just a small piece of rebar that goes up to, uh, attract lightning in the event of an, uh, electrical storm. And then, and, and one of these things, these actually create electrical safety because they're very, they attract lightning because they're so tall. And we anticipate that. We build a very extensive grounding system underground. So, um, the area actually gets safer from lightning strikes by putting up a cell tower because we attract it and dissipate the energy. Cell towers are very highly engineered and, uh, subject to a lot of design and construction standards by various different technical organizations. And, and they're all done very, um, location specific. We know we're kind of in a snow belt here, uh, Worcester, north of Worcester, and all Worcester counties. So they, the, the tower itself doesn't get designed until after the zoning board approves it. We go back, we do some more geotechnical investigation to figure out really what's underground there. And then design a foundation very specific to the soils and then design a tower very specific to that foundation.
In your application, you mentioned it's going to have power. It's going to have, I think, telephone service to the.
Yes.
To the, uh, is that for an auto dialer or sorts or something?
No, the way cell phones work, um, um, the phone talks to the antenna. The antennas are actually wired to the rest of the telecommunications world. So, uh, uh, so either, uh, so at, at some point fiber optic cables, it's telephone, but it's fiber optic cables will be brought in to connect that.
It's all brought in underground power? Everything's brought in underground or is it above ground?
I'm not sure. I believe it's above ground here. Yeah, it's overhead wires. So it's, it's overhead wires along the perimeter of the property to existing overhead wires on.
I see coming in from Mango Drive.
Exactly. Uh, uh, we're actually not, this is all developed here and paved. We've, uh, we've shown a little access driveway and utility run, but, uh, for the most part, we're not, we're not taking out any trees. Maybe a little bit along the, the forest line. But, uh, um, it's really all been paved for the, uh,
For the car dealership.
Car dealership. So we're not creating.
So it's, it's in the area of, it's already been paved, cleared. Basically, it looks like you're tucking it in that back corner.
Actually, I might have an aerial photo right here. Yeah, uh, this is an aerial photo. We're, we're basically, so it's on this standalone lot, but it's like right in here. So back at the back of it, where it's asphalted.
Okay.
And, uh, um, and so we show an access driveway. It's really just two, it's just a legal right to drive across our parking lot. We're not creating any new, uh, impervious surface because, uh, it's all been already paved.
Now, how many buildings are going, are you installing there to support the tower?
No buildings. Um, the, the good thing about telecommunications is the electronics involved are getting smaller and smaller. And now they've morphed into, um, cabinets. And they, I'm trying to look for an example. Uh, a cabinet might be the size of that file cabinet right there. And it'll have backup batteries in it and all the electronics. And it's just like a plastic weatherproof cabinet. So, uh, with a door on it. So it's a, and there might be, each tenant will have a, a cabinet about that size. Uh, so it's not a building. The benefit of those two is we used to build shelters and they were big, you know, ten by twenty rooms. And they were concrete and they were self-contained and they generated heat with the electronics inside. So you had to have bigger HVAC and that, we used to get a lot of complaints with the, the noise from the HVAC systems. These are self-cooling or they might have a small fan, the same size, you know, on a desktop computer, something that small. So it's, it's much more self-cooling and a lot safer, a lot less, um, um, intrusive. There's no, um, the foundation itself will be maybe ten by ten, twenty by twenty. We might design that afterwards. And then, but there's really no other material increase in impervious surface because.
Where would AT&T put their, um, generator?
What's that? The, the compound itself will be fifty by fifty. And you see, we show concrete pads showing, and that's each tenant will lease a separate concrete pad. And those concrete pads will have a cabinet like that and a small generator next to it. And some of the, uh, um, uh, some of the, um, cabinets now actually have built-in generators. It's like a one-stop unit. So they're getting much more compact in there. And, and, and to answer the earlier question, you know, what this is covering is, like I said, that whole southern area of Gardner, where the new Walmart is, the, um, the big commercial moment, and then extending down into, um, Hubbardston. And then when you overlay that with all the existing coverage, you can see it really provides contiguous coverage along the Route Two corridor and fills in some gaps along the, uh, um, you know, the smokestack was good because it was existing structure. But from a telecommunications, um, perspective, it's not the most ideal situation because, um, they use what was there as opposed to building something fresh.
I just have one question. It's sort of a little out of, you know, what you presented, but you mentioned that you, you've approved, they're going to put up one in Hubbardston behind the post office because there's a hill up back there. Will that complement the one that you're putting, that you're proposing?
Oh, absolutely. It's a great question. I just don't have the, the graphic, but as you can imagine, that site is probably down here. And, um, um, it's actually uphill from the post office.
Yes.
So that's going to cover this whole area down in here. It's not going to have any benefit to Gardner, but it's going to have tremendous benefit to Hubbardston and not Hubbardston, it, it's not going to cover the northern corner up here where this one does. It's not going to cover the western corner, the eastern corner. But for the most part, it's going to cover, um, you know, uh, does that gravel yard complex, basically from the gravel yard all, all the way down to the, uh, uh, rather.
Yeah, Pitterville gravel.
Exactly. Uh, so, uh, so it was done very consciously, uh, to dovetail with that.
Oh, it will complement this.
Oh, absolutely.
Not a hundred percent, but generally improved.
It'll, it'll definitely, it'll definitely complement, yeah, exactly.
And it runs over.
Gardner was, I mean, Hubbardston was a lot easier because there's nothing there. And, uh, and their zoning bylaw said you had to go in a very specific zone, the downtown zone. And, uh, so we really had no latitude. Uh, but it actually worked out well because like that's actually a high point in town. So it, uh, and, uh, uh, we had to go to the zoning board and the planning board, but, uh, that all worked out very well. The, uh, you know, uh, these facilities are also very heavily federally regulated with respect to power output. You know, they're not designed to cover all of Western Massachusetts. It's designed to cover, uh, uh, a couple of miles in each direction in Gardner. So it's a very low-powered facility and, uh, but, and, and still very heavily federally regulated by the FCC. And we can, we, we submitted a report if we were to lease this to four tenants, which we anticipate that we will over time. And they're all broadcasting at the same time. And, but because it's a hundred and fifty feet tall and because it's setback so far from abutting properties, the, the, uh, maximum permissional exposure limits are less, well, less than one percent. Point two one, uh, percent of the, uh, maximum, uh, permissional exposure limit set by the FCC. I'm sure you read it. I produced a twenty-five page memorandum going through your whole bylaw and how we comply with all the requirements of your zoning bylaw. I also produced a list of the nine special permit criteria, uh, and how we meet it. You know, in, in this particular case, it was quite easy because, uh, you know, there's no impact on abutters. There's, um, there's no traffic. There's no stormwater runoff. There's no, um, um, detriment to any city services. There's no cost to the city, but a true benefit to the city. So, uh, uh, I think it's quite easy to go through all the special permit criteria.
Sir, I think, I know you did. I've read it. It's right here. Although there's no one in here but Mr. Rockwood as an interested party. We do have people that go online and we look at you too. So I would ask if you could go over them, the nine items, you know, quickly.
Absolutely. I just think I got to close. I can't see it. The proposal shall be suitably located in a neighborhood of which is proposed and compatible with the neighborhood. This is in the C-two zone. Uh, there's commercial use, um, existing on the property. It's been there for many years. There's commercial uses on the other side of Mango Drive. It's right up against Route Two corridor. So I think it's quite easily just, uh, suitably located.
Are your responses in here someplace or?
Yeah, they are.
Yeah, there's a, there's a paragraph right afterwards. Uh, uh, I didn't do it one by one, but.
Eight seventeen and the project area.
Exactly.
Yeah, but it's, that's just our, that's just the base of our audience.
Yeah, that's your audience. We need your responses.
What I did, unfortunately, I just did it as a, a paragraph and not one by one, but, uh, the proposal should like safe and convenient, the heavy on possession movement. Um, these are unmanned facilities. So once the, uh, uh, facility is built, someone might drive by once a month to make sure the fence is intact, but, uh, it's.
Are these typically alarmed?
They're all remotely monitored. The, um, the, there's a fence around it, but then the cabinets themselves are remotely monitored and alarmed. And they're very, um, uh, security conscious because a lot of electronics.
Obviously, yeah.
So, uh, but, uh, so you can't breach the, uh, the cabinet without having it, um, uh, alarmed at, at a network operations center.
Okay.
The, uh, proposals will provide adequate space for off-street parking, um, and unloading of vehicles. Like I said, it's unmanned. There might be a pickup truck there after construction. Uh, and there's plenty of space, um, in the, uh, paved areas surrounding the.
With a very brave guy climbing up to the top of the monopole.
What's that?
With a very brave guy climbing up to the top of the monopole.
That's, I'm going to tell you, that's the biggest problem in our world right now is we can't find those very brave guys. And, and we used to rely, a, a lot of, uh, telecommunications professionals come out of the military. And the military has actually been kind of quiet the last several years. So, um, there, there's just not people coming through. We, we can't find people fast enough. You know, when I want to be a tower climber, um, the wages are outrageous and, uh.
Are you woozy looking out a second floor window? Never mind something like that.
The, the proposal shall provide adequate and safe facilities for the proposal of sewage and refuse. There's no water. There's no sewer. There's no, um, manned facilities. Still have a, a temporary facility during construction. The proposal shall not constitute a nuisance due to air and water pollution, um, erosion, flood, noise, dust. You know, it, it's very passive. There's no noise. There's no odor, smoke, anything like that. Uh, it's, um, completely benign to the, the surrounding neighborhood. Um, uh, the proposal shall not be substantial inconvenience or hazard to abutters. Three of the abutting lots are owned by the same, um, landowner. The lot to the south is undevelopable wetlands. A lot to the west is undevelopable wetlands. And, uh, um, the closest lot is owned by the city of Gardner. And then there's other commercial lots on the other side of Mango Street. The proposal should be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this chapter. Uh, it clearly is. You have a very extensive bylaw that has very, uh, specific design, height and setback limitations. And we've complied with all of those. Um, the proposal shall not have a significant detrimental impact on city services. We don't require any city services. Uh, uh, the proposal is consistent with the community development plan or master plan. I think improved telecommunications is always, um, something that the city tries to do. And the proposal is on property that was subject to the zoning map amendment. Uh, there's no zoning map amendments with respect to this part.
The, in your application, you may have mentioned about, um, the FAA will make the determination whether you have to have a beacon on the top. What, what is your expectation?
We don't believe that there will be. And we do some preliminary research to make sure of that. The problem is, is that there's the airport and usually, um, if we're more than five miles, you can say summarily. Because the airport is less than five miles, it has to get extended study by the FAA. We don't anticipate that it will based on database research and, uh, based on the flight path of the runway. The runway, I can assure you, it goes, um, basically north, south. And then we're to the east of the runway. But that's still being reviewed by the FAA. Um, I can't, uh.
If they do require a beacon, what, is it just a flashing red or, because I, I've seen in my travels, different types of beacons, you know, some of them will have like these, these obnoxious strobes that'll go off and.
The, there's a tower in Lemonster that I built several years ago, um, on this side of Lemonster, um, that has a little red light on top.
Yeah, okay. Red at the forty-five mile an hour curve, I think.
Exactly. Uh, um, Mount Ellen Road, Mount.
Mount Ellen Road, yeah.
At a, um, and that, I would say, if, that's likely what it would be. I think that's very similar. If that's a different airport, Lemonster is its own, or Fitchburg has an airport. But, uh, 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 we're not anticipating anything. We don't like it because quite frankly, once you light it, you have to. you have to maintain the lighting and it's a pain in the ass to change the light bulb. We have to pay someone to go up there and change the light bulb and you can't ever let it burn out. You gotta recycle them through quite frequently. And but we're not anticipating any will.
I just, I'll interject on your, your presentation, your presentation under section H, performance guarantees. Item number four is required a submission of annual verification of compliance by the FCC, FAA and National Standards Institute. And you gotta do that, you gotta submit that annually to the ZBA and the Building Commissioner. So that would handle your FAA compliance because if there was any exceptions, that would, I'll call it built in condition in their approval. You know, you're approved, however, you need a blinking red light or some kind of identification. And I think a lot of things for the FAA is they're gonna be 190 feet or higher.
In general, it's 200 feet. Anything over 200 feet gets scrutiny. Anything less than five miles to an airport gets scrutiny, but it doesn't mean that 200 feet or less than five miles is automatic. It just means it gets more scrutiny. And then that's when they look at flight patterns. And we've commenced a study, but it takes about six months. But we're pretty confident based on what we've done.
Yeah. So I mean, this covers it. You have to annually submit that to us and tells us you meet the criteria of FCC, FAA and et cetera.
We have engineers that can certify all that and they, the towers tend to be fully engineered upfront. The engineering standards, every time some tropical storm or hurricane goes through Florida, get actually upgraded. And so even in the last five years, because of Sandy and Katrina and now not the most recent one, but the one before that, you know, they, they anticipate more and more storms. Up here, we get some hurricanes, but more winter storms. And they, they keep changing the engineering standards to make them stronger and stronger and stronger. It just means we have to build beefier foundations and beefier anchor bolts and things like that. But we're, and the other thing too is we've been doing this for a long time. And even some assumptions that we made five and 10 years ago have proven short sighted. So we're trying not to be as short sighted, both in height and with structural capacity to make sure that they maintain their.
Access to the top is from the outside or the inside? Is there an internal ladder?
No, it's a monopole. It's basically a pole like this. Inside is cabling and outside there are.
I didn't know if inside it was sized where you could have a ladder.
No, it's not that big. It, it might be that big at the base. It might be six feet at the base, but it tapers up. And so it's probably only like three feet at the top. You couldn't get a body up there. The, the poles are designed with very specific climbing pegs. And they don't leave the climbing pegs on site. So a technician that would come to climb it would bring his own pegs. So for the first like 20 or 30 feet, and then there might be built in pegs starting at 30 feet going up. But for the first 20 or 30 feet, he has to have very specific pegs and we don't leave them on site so that no one could do it. They bring them. It's, the whole industry is very heavily regulated by OSHA. You know, two guys have to show up. There's always one guy in the ground or one guy's climbing and we're very safety conscious. As an industry, it's, it's a very, it's a very safe process, but it's.
Now, do you have to put up any kind of camouflage on this thing?
Your zoning bylaw says it has to be camouflaged.
I know.
With some subjective language, like to the most extent possible. And what I'm finding is our lame attempts to camouflage things in the past.
Makes it stick out like a sore thumb.
Have become more lame. I think there's a.
Some ugly trees sticking up out there.
There's a pretty ugly one on 495 in the median, just before, no, on Route Two, just before 495.
Right around Westford.
Yep.
There's another one in Harvard. It's really.
The Harvard was one I was thinking of. And then there's, but there's actually one on 495. It's either in Harvard or Bolton, just south of Route Two, that you can't really see. This, to be perfectly honest, to put a fake pine tree in the middle of a car dealership will look incredibly stupid. So we, and we're proposing a monopole as opposed to a lattice style tower that you see some of those. And that's our attempt to address your camouflage requirement.
Well, I think if I, in your write up, I'll call it the camouflage will be the height of the existing forest around it for a certain height. But that will also camouflage your base where your cabinets are. You will not see that.
I, no one's gonna see the base, the fencing and the cabinets because of trees on three sides and the auto dealership on the fourth side and the existing buildings. And, you know, the, the facility itself, it's like a galvanized steel, like a guardrail, which kind of dulls. It, it comes out dull and dulls even more over time. So it's non-reflective. It doesn't catch the sun.
I think if you see most of the towers that are put up today, I mean, the only two camouflage ones I can think of are Harvard and Westford. And it's so common that you see them and they're not camouflaged. It's becoming the rule. And I think you look at a lot of ordinances that were written, were written long before or with just the inception of cell towers, so let's not make them offensive. But things have evolved a lot. You know, I think in terms of size, locations, exterior, covering, painting, non-reflective. So I'm saying, I think maybe the ordinances haven't caught up with it, but by use, it's just happening.
I, I agree. And you know, I, I had a town say once, you can't put lipstick on a pig. And trying to cover it up makes it more noticeable.
More offensive.
What, what happens too is that, was it Westford or Boxer right next to it? We went in and the town required us to do it. So we were proposing one and there was another one in town. And it had been there for a long time and then they had subdivided all around it and put up houses, very nice houses. And the neighbors all came and said, can you ask the people to take the branches off because it just looks stupid? And, and so while we were on the other side of town saying, it's gonna look really great, pine tree, you'll never notice it. The neighbors on the other side of town were saying, no, take them off. They look stupid. So we.
I mean, I've seen hiding under the fly poles. I've seen that.
The problem with that is over the last five years, the antennas have gotten smarter. And by that, I mean, as the cabinets shrink, more of the electronics are baked into the antenna. So the antennas are getting a little bit, a little bit beefier, a little bit longer and a little bit hotter. There's, they have some electronic components. So when you try to put them in a flagpole, it doesn't work anymore. And, you know, sometimes, we can put it inside something, but it'd be putting it inside a silo. Something that's, you know, the antennas are, the, those triangular arrays are about 12 feet by 12 feet by 12 feet. So if you want me to build an 18 foot missile silo.
It's pretty, very real quick.
Yeah, it gets ridiculous. So both our and town's attempts to hide them have failed. There's, there's one on the Mass Pike by the state police in Lake West End. And you can see it. They've, it's evolved over time and they can't, as they took off a component to switch out the antenna, they can't put the component back on. So there's this giant thing with all kinds of holes in it now. It looks stupider than if you'd have just built a cell tower and said.
Probably around Westfield with the state police barracks. Okay. You can continue on. I think you addressed the nine criteria for the special permit. So you can go past that if you wish.
And then the last thing I wanted to talk about, and I'm sure you guys have all heard before. The federal government is very involved in wireless telecommunications infrastructure citing about, I used to say 20 years ago, but it's even longer than 1996. They developed a very comprehensive set of laws called the Telecommunications Act, which it starts off by saying, nothing shall limit the authority of a zoning board with respect to its zoning powers. However, basically what the Telecommunications Act says is you can't discriminate. You can't say my Verizon phone works, therefore I don't want AT&amp;T in town or anything like that. And you can't have the effect of prohibiting telecommunications. It doesn't say you have to say yes. It just says you can't say no without sufficient reason. And, and there's been lots of case law throughout all of Massachusetts and the entire country interpreting that. And, you know, in this particular case, we're in a permitted zone. We don't need any variances. We don't need a height variance. We don't need any setback variance. So it, it's really hard for you guys to say no because there's no reason to say no. We don't have any opposition. But, and that's what the government is trying to do. It's like they saw the benefit 20 years ago of wireless telecommunications. I don't even think they anticipated the, the depth of penetration. There are actually more cell phones in the world than, in the United States than people. Because so many people have multiple cell phones, one for work and one for business that I think they say like 105% of the population has a cellphone. And with all the 911 calls, there's, there's just such a need. And both the federal government regulatory and the federal courts judicially have been very supportive of wireless development. So we would ask that you grant the special permit. We still, and, and I did the last thing, I'll tell you. Once the board approves the special permit, we then go through a very extensive federal due diligence process. The federal government makes sure that, it's called the National Environmental Policy Act, NIPA. And it's a, a very extensive review to make sure we don't have any impact on an immense amount of environmental resources. There are no endangered species, plant and wildlife. There's no Native American artifacts where we're gonna be digging. There's no impact on historical resources. There's no impact on wetlands. There's no impact on, you know, there's no environmental or any kind of environmental contamination. So, and that process, the federal government is actually getting longer and longer. So we have another six months worth of due diligence before, once we finish here and you guys lock in the site location wise, height wise, to finish that process. We, not so much, I doubt it's gonna happen here. In Hubbardston, we have to pay archaeologists to do test pits because we're kind of close to downtown, which is a historic district. And even though we're in the middle of woods and no one has ever touched this place, they think we might find Native American artifacts or something. So we have to engage archaeologists after we sift through the dirt and it's just part of the process. So we still have an immense amount of due diligence to do here. I, we, we do preliminary research to make sure we're not gonna do it and our engineers are really good. We're setback from wetlands where there's no endangered species in the middle of the parking lot here. So we're not anticipating any issues. It's just, it's a very lengthy review process.
Randy?
I have no questions.
Reverend Almar.
Okay, I'm gonna dispense asking if there are any city officials to speak because there are no city officials in the audience. I will also dispense about asking for any individual parties who may be in favor or opposition to this application. I can ask if there's any interested parties who would like to issue a comment.
I have no comment. Thank you.
Thank you. So other than the applicant and the no comment member, there's nobody in the audience and then the board is here. So I'm gonna dispense with asking all those people because there's no one here. However, I do have some questions and if you would be kind to answer them. In the presentation, and I just put something, it was E two. The, the board has the ability to hire a consultant to review your submission. Also under H, H sector, performance guarantees. So what coverage is, is, is any coverage going to be purchased by the applicant or by the Salvador group, et cetera, to cover, we'll call it damage liability, if there is any? And also maintain, maintenance of the roads to, you know, I know there's not a lot of traffic, probably twice a month. Somebody comes up, checks the thing, make sure it's okay.
Okay, there's three things that you should think about. One, insurance. You can require us to provide evidence of insurance in an amount, I would just say an amount reasonably satisfactory to the building inspector. We have plenty of insurance and we just need to show you that. Two, with respect to maintenance of the road, in this particular case, we're not, I mean, we're not building a road. We're just driving over the existing car dealership. So we would ask that you waive that. However, the third thing is.
What if it happens if they sell the dealership?
We've entered into a long term lease. So we will.
Maintain some access, even if they sell the property.
And that's why we, on the plans, we drew a dotted line. So if they somehow reconfigure the, we can drive over where we want. However, we have a definite line that skirts the edge of the property going to Manca Street.
And you plan on putting that under right away, deed right away?
Yeah, it's basically a, an access easement. It's built into our lease. We lease a 50 by 50 square in the middle and then the right to get to a public right away. And so if they reconfigure, we have the right, but, and we'll work with them. If they say, can you go this way instead of that way, we'll say yes. But we always, we have a, you know, they're generally 50 year leases or something like that to, to make sure we'll always be there. The third thing, I think your bylaw requires us to show security in the event of the tower becoming obsolete. And we routinely give towns bonds for removal. And so we would agree to a condition of that. We could provide the building inspector with a cost estimate from an engineer. It was really interesting. Your bylaw, so we're gonna get quotes from three contractors. I've never seen that before. What we do is we get an engineer and there are engineering standards to say it will cost us much to do this work and it's an itemized thing. And then we can submit that to the building inspector and along with a bond to secure the removal.
That's interesting because you said the third one and that was my number three.
Right. I, I, that, that's, comes up, it's really interesting because the bonds cost money. We've never actually utilized one. I've never actually seen it work because no one's ever done it. You guys get, not maybe you, but the planning boards always get bonds for someone that.
And it's virtually, virtually impossible to collect upon.
And, and to finish the road because they scope out the road and then they build the subdivision and then they forget to come back to pave or, or put in the sidewalk and.
But they're virtually impossible to, to attach.
And so we put up these bonds and I've never had it ever utilized yet. None of our towers.
Most of them have renewal clauses too. I mean, what happens if you don't? My recollection was like five or 10 years or something on a bond that, you know, the holder of the bond may say, I don't wanna pay for it anymore. And it becomes void.
Ours actually are one year, but you could write in a condition that we have to renew it before the end of the expiration of the previous bond. And if we don't, then it's a zoning violation that you can enforce. And you still have the bond to take it down. I'll be honest. You raise a good point. Other towns raise other points. And it's just a, a concept that everyone has tried, but no one's ever.
Exercised.
Exercised. So it'll be interesting to see what happens. But we, we give every town a bond.
Through your experience, has any town ever required a, you know, a two party bank account? Where, you know, the treasurer, whoever holds the bank book or whatever, and, but it's in the name of both the municipality and the.
I've had towns try, we resist that only because it just ties up money. We resist that only because it just ties up money. And, you know, these are 50-year deals. Where's that money going to be in 20 years?
State treasurers abandoned.
Right, right, right. FindMassMoney.gov. You know, that's another situation that people have tried. We resist it because, one, we don't want to tap the money. And, two, I don't know how that works. You know, the bonding situation works when a developer has three years or a finite amount of time to finish the subdivision road.
Is there language in your lease with the Salvadors that says if the tower is not utilized, it's to be removed?
Yep. We have the right to terminate because we pay rent. If we don't use it anymore, we terminate the lease and it requires us to take it down and take out the fence and take out all the improvements in your rent.
Are you going to have any lighting or signage or anything like that back there?
No, on the fence, there's small signs about the size of my laptop that just say, "In case of issue call," and we have a, a, a.
No trespassing.
A network operations center. There's a couple of signs that say, "No trespassing." They're all about the size of that laptop on the fence. There's no commercial lighting. There's no commercial signage or anything like that. And with respect to lighting, there's no service lighting. They're unmanned, so there's not like a motion sensor or anything like that. If a tech comes at night, which is rare, they'll bring lighting and a headlamp or something. It's a, there's no service lighting.
Okay, I just, I have two questions. You mentioned the lease and there's verbiage in there about, you know, taking it down, et cetera. Would it be possible to get a copy of the lease? Not to look at the conditions or change it just to review it and see if it addresses some of the issues we've got some current concerns?
Yeah, I could give you the language with respect to removal upon termination.
Yep.
But I, the answer is yes. But I think your concern would be that it, not so much that the landlord has that right, that you have that right and that you have security for it, which is why we post the bond.
Yeah, so if there's a section on removal, if there's a section on insurance that they will provide, almost like a, sort of a triple-net type thing, you know, they provide the insurance and everything else, not you, you know, for any insurance or liability or anything that's on that property.
I'm just thinking, well, if, if it was a bond for removal, too, it's, it's located on private property. The municipality would not have the authority or the right to go across private property to remove said tower.
I will tell you, I had a gentleman in Western Mass who sat in your position, who raised that issue, and I completely agreed with him. And like I said, this has never been exercised. So that town required us to do a three-party agreement. It basically says the town has the right to go on the private property to remove the tower with the bond money in the event that the tower owner does not. So we could, we'd agree to that condition.
I have one more question. Since we do have the ability to hire an independent consultant to review your submission, do you have any names of consultants that do this and review? And that's impartial to your company or to them?
The answer is yes. But what I'd rather do is, one, I'd argue that you don't need it because there's no opposition, there's no reason why you'd need it. However, rather than me giving you names, I'll give you names of people in your position or other towns or planners that have hired consultants, and you can ask them. And that way, I'm not frightening you with a name. And, and just because I don't want to be biased, there are a finite number of people that towns hire. I don't argue that it's not necessary. But if you think it is.
Yeah, I would, if you could submit maybe to the building commissioner, then you can converse with us. Okay? So I mean, that's. And then the submission of that annual certification that I spoke about, the FCC, FAA.
That would be a conditional approval, but yes.
Okay. Any further questions, Randy or Mel?
No.
Do you want to visit the site to see the actual location?
No, it's the aerial, the aerial showed it all as far as I'm concerned. It was, I didn't realize it was basically within that back paved area.
Yeah. And there was an item in there, too, that they were willing to float a balloon if we wanted to go see and check the height? Do you feel that's necessary?
No.
No.
No. And you've got a minimum of 150-foot fall zone, correct?
Yep.
That's correct. I call it tower height setback. Falls on implies something that doesn't happen. But, but it actually, like, the one, the, the monopole design, when you talked about the internal, all the cabling was up through the middle. And so they're designed not to topple over. What has happened in some cases is you get some lean to it. And they're actually over-engineered at the base, and then they start to taper. And, you know, you might get a situation where there's some lean to it, but the cabling actually holds it together. There've been no reported instances where they lie down because the, between the foundation and the anchor bolts, that they're so over-engineered. And, and I got lots of pictures in the file somewhere.
You've had tornadoes?
I got a great picture of a tower in Kansas, I believe. And there's a school bus that got blown into the tower and wrapped around the base of the tower, and the tower is still standing. And, you know, given all the hurricanes, we've had minimal instances of issues with respect to that because they're so heavily engineered compared to everything else in town. So it's a, so we call it tower height setback. It's a reasonable request, but I hate to use the word "fall zone."
Okay. I'll just make a comment. Many years ago, when I was on this board, we had an application for a tower. I don't remember if it was a mono or lattice work. They met the fall zone, we'll call it, on three sides. The fourth side was 40 feet from a building. And they said, well, they told us it wouldn't, it won't fall that way because of our cabling. Well, you can't plan that it's not going to fall that way.
No. We, some towns have extraordinary tower height setback requirements, like, two times or three times because they were just trying to regulate. And I, and if, and we try very hard. But if, for example, the wetlands pushed me towards one of the boundary lines, we routinely request setback variances. And I can get an engineer to certify that it won't fall down, lie down. It'll, can be designed with what I just said so that it'll, it'll crumple onto itself, but not ever lie down. So we, we, in this case, I don't need any setback variances, but if we have to request them, we do.
Any further questions, Randy or Mel?
No.
You don't want to view it? To state my opinion here, I'd like to continue this the next month because we've got some padding here that gives me, at least the board, a month that sort of puts a semblance to this and come up if we've got some additional conditions. Because I don't want to be compressed in time right now to try to hear all the conditions. And we miss them, we close the hearing, and it's done. So I'll ask your comments if you.
I don't have a problem with that.
I agree.
Okay.
Can I just confirm one thing? I agree with all of that. I could probably provide you with forms of conditions other towns have adopted. I will tell you that Hubbardston, this was brand new. Their decisions were incredibly thoughtful. And because it's so close and used to shareability inspector, I'd offer you their decision. It's overthought, but it might have some language in there.
No, we would appreciate if you could submit that. If you submit it, too.
Mariola?
Absolutely.
Yeah, because Hubbardston tried to put it up in the church tower a couple of years ago, and they could vote it down.
You know, it, it's, the more you try to hide, the worse it gets. Churches weren't built with telecommunications in mind, so putting cabling in and equipment and generators and, you know, everything that you would need, it, it just, we tried really hard. Sometimes, you know, just traditional towers.
I think as history repeats itself, that church now is undergoing major reconstruction because it's old.
We have done some churches. There's one in Worcester. It's a Baptist church. It's right by Worcester, the, the college.
WPI?
WPI. It's, it's, it's a, it's on the road that goes out towards Assumption, but right downtown.
Charles Street.
Right downtown. And, and that has antennas at it. And, quite frankly, we don't like it because they're stupid expensive. And, you know, they, they're not adaptable. I have a project tomorrow night where we're taking antennas out of a steeple and putting it, we're building a tower behind the church because the church still wants the money. But we can't fix the upgrade things that.
Yeah. And it's probably a blessing for that church that they didn't get it, you know, because of where they are today. So. All right, do I hear a motion to continue this case to December?
Seconded.
Any further discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Can I confirm one thing?
Yes, sir.
Did you want to get a consultant or not? I personally, I don't think it's necessary, but that'll take some time. There's going to be some money involved. I, again, I don't know why you would, but if you did, it's going to take some logistics to.
Well, I guess, I would like to say I want to have the option that we can. So I think that's where we have to have some discussions amongst the board members. I probably will do some confirming with Mr. Gene, our, our city solicitor. And I just want to cover bases, you know, in all due diligence for the benefit of you, the city, and the, the applicant. So, so yes, I would like to have that option that we could if we need to. So at least you are noticed, and not a surprise to you if we say yes, we do. Okay. So all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, continue with granted, and we'll see you.
20th.
The 20th of December.
Perfect.
Thank you for a great presentation. Your package was very easy to follow and contained all.
Yeah, he's clearly, he's done this before.
Once or twice. Okay, I do have some minutes to approve. So I'll call them off here in a minute.
Now, those are the ones I did. Did anybody have any comments on it? The 19th?
I didn't.
Okay.
See, I got the 19th, the 18th, and the 20th. So I'm going to try to do them all in one package.
There was one question for, yeah. Did, on this one, the School Street property. I did not remember if they did the, you know, if they addressed in the public, you know, the nine conditions. And that's why I didn't, you know, and Mariola did it. I think we both agreed it was a very confusing application. And, and I, I wasn't sure, so I didn't, I didn't have a chance. I didn't have a.
I believe they did, but you know what?
Because I'm looking at this page, and, I mean, this is sort of an ant.
Well, that's June Street.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't add this down. Yeah. Well, why don't we hold off?
I mean, we might have to just take a quick look at the YouTube video just to see if it's there or not.
Let's hold off this, this package of minutes until we get to the video and see if they did address it.
Yeah, I mean, that, that was the only thing I, you know. I don't want to have necessarily incomplete minutes.
Yeah, I agree with you. All right, so then we'll just do two packages. Okay, so I'm looking here at the minutes and looking for approval. Minutes of July 19th, 2022, and a minutes of October 20th, 2022. If you've had, you hopefully have had an opportunity to read them, make your suggestions for changes if they're wrong.
No.
And I know I sent, I sent it in to Mariola that I was okay with what we had. So do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of July 19th, 2022, and October 20th, 2022?
There were minutes for your site visit, too.
Yeah. You've got the minutes for the site visits, don't you? You have?
I didn't know. I didn't go on them because I wasn't.
I, I wrote them.
Yeah, because I did them. I submitted them.
I remember Connor coming back saying you didn't have any comments.
All right, so we have not sent them to her yet. And I'm aware of it. You didn't get anything on minutes for site visits with who went?
Because I saw them. I saw you put it out. I had it, and I thought I replied to it.
All right, I'm going to have to, I'll look back tonight or tomorrow.
I'll look in mine, too. I must keep this.
Yes, because I did the site visit minutes. Okay, so on these minutes, July 19th and 10/20, do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved. Seconded.
Seconded. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes approved. We'll defer the 18th minutes.
Yeah, because you've got minutes from the site visit. 29th was sent on 31st. And those are, those are them.
I don't write about them.
I haven't, I haven't because I didn't participate in the site visit.
Okay, you didn't, none of the site visit?
No. No, I was, no, well.
Okay. Do we review them?
I did. I thought I responded to it.
Okay. We will send them to you in the next day or two. Okay? All right, any further business before the board?
Motion to do it there?
We have his, nope, just the minutes for approval. Uh, no other bills or correspondence, et cetera. So do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Propose, no opposition, meaning adjourn.